We call to order the regular September 17th, 2012 meeting of Robertson County Commission. We recognize Commissioner Steve Haley with the indication to be followed by the pledge to the flag.
Bow with me, please. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity we have to come. We can assemble freely, Lord, without any fear, and to conduct the business of our government. We thank you for the soldiers across the field who are giving their lives so that we can have this freedom. Be they each one of us, Lord, as we go forth conducting the presence of our county. May we be mindful of the money that is being spent in the hard-earned taxpayers of Robertson County that put it into our system so that we can better our lives through this, through our actions. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chief, you'll press yes and confirm you will be in the system. There being twenty-three commissioners present, and Mr. McAfee absent, I declare that we do have a quorum. Commissioners, you have in your packets the minutes from the August meeting. What's your pleasure? Have a motion for approval by Commissioner Diorio, and a second by Commissioner Gregory. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no, so they are approved. Under communications from County Mayor, I'm going to recognize Ms. Sandy Ramsey, who is representing some exciting happenings going on in Adams, the tourism center of Robertson County over the next several weekends. So Sandy, appreciate you coming and sharing this exciting news. Tell us about it.
I will be glad to. Thank you, Mayor, for inviting me to come here tonight. For the next six weeks, weekends in Adams, Tennessee, we have the Bell Witch Fall Festival going on. This weekend, the Red River Boys, and I know anyone that was from the county and was back, was here back in the eighties, you all remember the Red River Boys and what a phenomenon they were, how important they were to this county. The Red River Boys are coming back together for two concerts, the 21st and 22nd, as a benefit for community spirit, the group, our nonprofit organization that puts on Smoke and Spirit, the story of the Bell Witch, every year. The boys are getting paid absolutely nothing. They're doing it just because, just for the fun of it and just because they want to. And everyone, I would encourage you to come out the 21st and 22nd to see the Red River Boys in concert again. We may not ever see this happen again. And they're having so much fun doing it that I think their fun will, will sort of go off on us and we'll be having a good time, too. The weekend following that, the last weekend in September, first weekend in October, is Smoke, a Ballad of the Night Riders. This is a story that happened right here in Robertson County in the early 1900s. It's a story of the tobacco war and the night riders. It was written by David Alford. It's a bluegrass musical. Don't think you're going to get some very boring history lesson. You will learn the history of the tobacco wars and the night riders, just incidentally, but you'll get to hear a bluegrass musical, you'll get to see a love story, and you'll get to see what the families went through as the tobacco farmers were starving during the early 1900s when there was a monopoly on the tobacco and they weren't being paid enough money to even raise their tobacco. There's a story about a family, a husband, a wife, and a little boy, and what all happens to them as the story of the tobacco wars progress and the night riders come. So Smoke is the last weekend in September, first weekend in October. And what we've been doing for the last ten or eleven years, Spirit, the authentic Bell Witch experience, also written by David Alford. And I know a lot of you all have probably seen Spirit. But come out again. We've got a new stage, a new set, we've got more seating, and it's just going to be a treat this year, as it is every year. So do yourselves a favor and come to Adams at least three times in the next six weeks. We've got lots to offer. The Red River Boys, Smoke for two weekends, and then Spirit for three weekends. And where can you get tickets? They're at the Robertson County Chamber of Commerce here in Springfield. They're at the Adams City Hall. We have them at Burdette's Tea Shop on the Square in Springfield. You can also get them by calling 615-696-1300, or online at www.bellwitchfallfestival.com. And if we are not absolutely sold out to the max, you'll be able to get them at the door. So as I said, do yourselves a favor and come learn a little bit about Robertson County, laugh, cry a little bit maybe, especially at Smoke. And I think there might be a few tears with the Red River Boys. So I said, come to Adams and see what's going on up there for the next few weeks. Thank you very much for letting me come tonight.
Thank you, Sandy. So we look forward to this. I can remember probably going back eight or nine years ago, going to the opening night of Spirit, and there were people there from seven or eight states, and people there from foreign countries. Gives you some idea of how wide the interest in the Bell Witch is.
It's a worldwide phenomenon, and two-thirds of the people that come to see Spirit are from outside this county. And we're talking between three and four hundred people a night, and two-thirds are from outside the county.
Yeah. And of course, Smoke is just a great, great part of our, of our history. So if you haven't seen these, or even if you had, they, they tweak Spirit every year to make it a little different than the year before. So certainly worthwhile to come out and see that. So thank you very much for, for coming and sharing that with us. Of course, for a number of years, our meetings here have been carried on Comcast cable TV. Not every person has access to Comcast, and the card that I think you've received from Walter George is, is interesting for that. You can now watch the commission meetings online at a, at a website called JustNorthOfNashville.com. So currently, they'll be posted what, Walter, a couple of days after the event. There's even some talk that in the future, they might be able to go live with them. So we're excited about that, and anything we can do to get information disseminated to more people, I think it's very much of a plus. So if you have any questions or comments, you have Walter's email address there, or contact him, but it's www.JustNorthOfNashville.com, and they are posted there going back several months for, for that. So pay attention to that. I think you probably received an email recently about flower money from, from Ms. Ballard, and she's here tonight if you want to give that. This is money that we, when we have a death in the commission family, we like to send flowers. And I think we've just about depleted the fund, so give you a chance to, to make those contributions if you would so like. So Ms. Jody's here to, to accept your money. The next thing the chair has are reports. And the first one is 7.1 from the Highway Department, questions or comments. 7.2 is from the Veteran Service Officer, questions or comments? 7.3 is from the Planning Office, questions or comments? 7.4 is from Animal Control, questions or comments? 7.5 is from EMS, questions or comments? 7.6 is from Emergency Management, questions or comments? 7.7 is the Inmate Expense Report, questions or comments? 7.8 is Report from Gore-McBane Public Library, questions or comments? 7.9 is the Financial Report, questions or comments? 7.10 is Report of the Trustees, Statement of Funds, questions or comments? Those are all the reports that the chair has. What's your pleasure? Have a motion by Commissioner Jones to be accepted and ordered filed, and seconded by Commissioner Baggett. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no, so they are approved. Now I recognize Commissioner Billy Vogel, who's chairman of the Nominating Committee. For, just a minute, Commissioner Vogel, I got ahead of myself. I skipped, I skipped right down there. Being September, it's necessary for the chair to, for the commission to elect a chair and a chair pro temp for the coming year. So I'll open the floor at this time for election of chair.
I rise to put a name in the nomination to be Speaker of this body for the year 2012 and 2013. He's a person that has been, been admired by the people in this community, by our commission, and earned the respect of his peers across middle Tennessee. After having said that the way that he told me to say it, I've nominated Howard Bradley.
Thank you, Commissioner. I couldn't have done this well, Commissioner Jones. Thank you, sir. Are there other nominations? Other nominations? Need a second, need a second. I'm sorry. Have a second by Commissioner Farmer. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of, of the election of the current chair say aye. Opposed, no. So thank you for the trust that you have given to me. I will do my best to be in this chair third Monday night, barring something that's totally unforeseen. Now for the election of Chairman Pro Temp. Commissioner Gray?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put a nomination, named Steve Haley, Pro Temp.
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Stubblefield. Are there other nominations for Chairman Pro Temp?
The nomination cease and let the acclamation.
Motion that nomination cease and be elected by acclamations, or second to that, seconded by Commissioner Farmer. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no. So Commissioner Haley is elected Chairman Pro Temp. Steve, I'll do my best to see that you have nothing to do.
I appreciate that, Mayor.
Do my absolute best. Now, Mr. Vogel, sorry. I'll eat my Wheaties until I'll be here. Mr. Vogel is chairman of the Nominating Committee. You have in your packet or online the September Committees, as we call them. So I'll turn it over now to Commissioner Vogel.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Clerk, fellow commissioners, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, the Nominating Committee met September 10th. We had a full quorum, had Mr. Bradley and Jody Ballard there with us. And the following committees is what we came up with. And Mr. Chairman, it suits you, I'd like to read them all, we can take and vote them all at one time?
Okay.
The Beverage Committee, Buddy Bryant, Bubba Darce, Bobby Kouts, Bill Gray, Kevin Gray. Building and Grounds, Kathy Spears, Lanny Hadcock, Buddy Bryant, James Bowens, and Bill Gray. Delinquent Tax, Robert Farmer, Bubba Darce, Faye Stubblefield, Bobby Jones, and Carol Dugger. Education, Bobby Kouts, Steve Haley, Billy Ray, Jonathan Gardner, and Bobby Jones. Emergency Management Service, Amelies, Civil Defense, Larry Diorio, Tommy Baggett, Faye Stubblefield, Randy Wilson, and Don Eden. For all of y'all, that's the EMS Committee. Finance Management, the County Mayor, of course, Mr. Bradley, Superintendent Schools, Mr. Whitlow, Mr. Hester, Supervisor of Highways, and we have four citizens selected by the County Commission, plus Buddy Bryant, Robert Farmer, Lanny Hadcock, and Tommy Baggett. Fire Committee is Billy Vogel, Billy Ray, Patsy Gregory, Carol Dugger, and Lanny Hadcock. Law Enforcement, Bobby Kouts, Larry Diorio, Tommy Baggett, Kathy Spears, Bill Gray. Legislative Committee, Jonathan Gardner, Bobby Jones, Steve Haley, Patsy Gregory, and Bubba Darce. Nominations, Kevin Gray, Tommy Baggett, Bobby Jones, Billy Vogel, and Faye Stubblefield. Personnel, Larry Dean, Justin Holman, Don Eden, Jonathan Gardner, Irvin Brown, Howard Bradley, and Jody Stewart. Solid Waste, Billy Ray, Randy Wilson, Tommy Jackson, Buddy Bryant, and Kevin Gray. The Safety Committee, we're replacing Bubba Darce, who couldn't go because of his work schedule, with Tommy Jackson. Handicap Advisory Board, Arthur Garrison, Reverend Frank Evans, Deborah Justice, Bill Gray, and Susan McAfee. North Crest Board of Trustees, James Bowens, Dan Green, Tracy Langston, Dee Reed, and Dr. Keith Goldberg. And our Ethics Committee, because of the passing of Jerry Pooh, we will nominate Neil Sullivan. Mr. Chairman, that's our nominations.
And seconded by Commissioners Gray and Jones simultaneously. Commissioner Haley?
I just have one question for Commissioner Vogel. Just refresh my memory on the, on the Finance Management. When did we elect those four citizens?
No, that, that those four citizens are county commissioners.
They are county commissioners. It's just my thing, said four citizens, and I guess we're all, I hope we're all citizens of the county.
They don't have to be commissioners, but they are.
Okay, that's what I was getting at.
The other question. Mr. Eden?
Mr. Vogel, for, for the last two years, I know there's been a sister committee to the Law Enforcement Committee.
Workhouse?
Yeah. Is that part of this?
They're January.
I think they're January when budget and all them come around.
Anything else? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no, so they are approved. Thank you, Mr. Vogel.
Thank y'all.
Good job, Doug.
We'll recognize now Mrs. Martha Wilkinson, our Director of Planning, for public hearing. If you're here to speak, to speak in favor of or in opposition to any rezoning resolution, please stand, state your name for the clerk, and you'll be given an opportunity to speak. Ms. Martha.
Our first three resolutions will be from Agriculture Two to R40. Then our fourth one will be a change from Agriculture Two to C3, which is restrictive commercial. Mr. William E. Brewer is asking that 2.659 acres located on the Biden Ridge Road, the 12th Civil District, the fourth voting district, receive a change of zoning, and the Planning Commission voted nine to zero to rezon. The second request is from, is for the estate of Lavina H. Lipsken, and Mr. Don Langford represented her and for the estate, and asked that one acre located on Lipsken Road, the 13th Civil District, the 11th voting district, have a change of zoning. There was one abstention, which was Mr. Langford, and eight voted for the rezoning. The third resolution is for Ms. Nicole Sloan, representing the estate of Rebecca Wilson. That is to ask that 1.92 acres have a change of zoning located on Woodrow Wilson Road, 15th Civil District, the eighth voting district. The vote of the Planning Commission was nine to zero. The fourth resolution is for Mr. William N. Breton. He is asking that 3.42 acres located on Emerson Road, the 11th Civil District, the first voting district, have a change of zoning to commercial. The vote of the Planning Commission was nine to zero for rezoning.
Anyone in the audience here to speak to any of these resolutions? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at this time and bring it back to the commission for your consideration. Have a motion by Commissioner Diorio, and let's see, a second by Commissioner Kevin Gray. Ready to vote on these resolutions? If you're in favor of these resolutions, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. Mr. Jones, are you still voting?
There being 23 votes in favor and none opposed, and one absent, I declare those resolutions approved. Thank you, Ms. Martha.
We now begin our resolutions. And the new resolutions, we'll recognize Commissioner Garner for authorized satellite locations for County Clerk's Office.
Mayor, Madam Clerks, fellow commissioners, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, bring to your attention Resolution Number 091712070. It's a resolution to authorize satellite locations for County Clerk's Offices.
Motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bryant.
Fellow commissioners, I bring to your attention this resolution. I believe that the substance of the motion is, or the resolution is set out in the third paragraph, in essence, to allow the County Clerk's Office to open up satellite offices with the Farmers' Bank. It references Exhibit A, which is the seven offices, or satellite offices, in Robertson County that the Farmers' Bank has. I'd ask for your consideration in this motion.
Question, Commissioner.
On that list, it showed two of those locations were in Sumner County. Will we be opening the offices in Sumner County?
I think there's seven banks that's on board. Westmoreland is in Sumner County, but it would also make it convenient for the citizen to go there. They would have their registration on this day that would tell what county that they're in. So they could do that. If Westmoreland is going to do it, and I don't know if they, if Westmoreland is going to do it or not. I have a question.
It also stated Portland, I believe, too.
Portland is part of Robertson County.
The questions.
Well, they're not actually in Robertson County.
The building you're talking about.
Portland is. Portland has, has territory in Robertson County.
I was talking about the bank itself.
Bank itself.
Actual, yeah.
The bank itself is.
There's, I think there's three locations that were actually in Sumner County. I just wondered if we were going to put satellite offices in those as well.
We're just going to have the deputies at the bank. The bank tellers are going to be the ones who are actually going to do this. My office will not have a deputy go out. And we also have a satellite office in White House, which is in Sumner County also.
I'm not opposed to it. I was just wondering if we were going to do it.
The question. Commissioner Stubblefield?
Mr. Mayor, I, I would.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Ready to vote? If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being 22 votes in favor, one abstention, and one absent, I declare that resolution approved. Outpatient, inpatient, mental health evaluations, misdemeanors, Commissioner Jones, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, is that who we have for number two? I'm sorry, Mr. Kouts. I had written down the wrong name.
We do look a little alike.
Think I can tell you apart?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, fellow commissioners, guests, I'd like to present to you Resolution 091712071. This is a resolution requesting that Tennessee General Assembly repeal TCA 33 Day 7 Day 304, Public Chapter 531, Section 45, and to require the state of Tennessee to continue to be financially responsible for the outpatient, inpatient, mental health evaluations, and treatment for individuals charged with misdemeanor offenses only. We're encouraging them, as I understand, the General Assembly to repeal a law that holds the county as financially responsible. That's what this is.
Let's get a second, and we'll see if there's any discussion. Have a motion, seconded by Commissioner Garner. Any questions? I think all of you know why we're having this discussion. The county was held accountable for a significant sum of money on an individual this past year, and other counties have suffered the same situation. So we're asking the state to address this situation. Any other questions? Question's been called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being 23 votes in favor, none opposed, and one absent, I declare that resolution approved. Thank you, sir. We recognize now Commissioner Haley for New Springfield Elementary School Expense Concept Phase. Commissioner Steve Haley?
Fellow commissioners, audience, Madam Clerk, I present to you Resolution 091712072 for your considerations. Resolution to approve preliminary expense for the concept phase of the New Springfield Elementary School. We'll get a second, we'll discuss it.
Second by Commissioner Bryant.
The crux of the resolution lies in Paragraph Two, where as the Education Committee has reviewed and approved this request, allocate and spend $20,000 for expense related to the concept phase of new school project. That is the purpose of this resolution, resolution to be so approved. That expenditure deals with the concept design for the South Elementary School, which will be located on Batson Boulevard.
Questions or comments? Mr. Brown?
Now, have we put this out to bid, or are we just taking something we've done time to time again, as far as the concept? Have we asked various people to come in and put this out to bid for the concept part, or do we just go big?
Mr. Brown, I think, and Mr. Haley, you may know the answer, I think that the board sent out a request for proposals and received nine. Is that right, Mr. Whitlow?
Correct.
And chose, chose a particular firm to do this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for Mr. Whitlow to be allowed to come up and expedite.
Mr. Whitlow, if you'll come up, if you'll come up and become a member of this body, we're dispensing with a vote at the moment. Sorry, a second to make him a member. Let's see, we hadn't gotten to that yet, have we?
Go ahead, go ahead, Armo.
Okay, we still need that. Second, we do need that. We hadn't, we hadn't dealt with that, that resolution yet. So second, a second to make Mr. Whitlow a member, Commissioner Gray, Kevin Gray, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no, so they are approved. I got a little ahead of Resolution Number Nine. Mr. Whitlow, you have the floor.
Yes, gentlemen, this is a request for some funding to do some design, concept ideas on, on what this school needs to look like. We, well, we kind of know what it needs to look like. It's got to look very similar to the, to the college site over there on Highland Crest, but we need to know what, what the budget's going to need to look like, what the ground's going to need to look like. We need to, not only that, but we need somebody to, to advise us on what's the best way to move students around, so far as rezoning, moving. We've got the way, large overcrowding at Chrysler, we've got large overcrowding at Westside right now. We've had significant growth in the Springfield area the last two years. So we're, we're looking for some advice and counseling from, from professionals and consultants to, to guide us on making the next step decisions. We have chosen Hewlett-Spencer to, we've engaged them as the developer for this, and they are right now vetting some architects, and they're going to make a recommendation to us as architect, as who might be the best choice for architect at our October meeting. So that's, that's where we stand on this process right now.
Commissioner Diorio?
We're looking at a concept. When are we planning on building the building?
When the money can be available. I mean, it, it needs to be, we need to start on it as soon as possible.
Next year.
Next year would be great.
Two years.
We need, we need to move into this building by the fall of '14. We, we almost, we really have to move in by the fall of '15.
The people that we have elected to do this concept, concept, they've got a background in zoning, or, I'm, I'm kind of confused on what we're doing, really.
They have a background in developing projects for, I mean, they, they've built Springfield High School, or, well, they renovated Springfield High School. They built White House Heritage High School. They renovated East Chilburn. So, I mean, that, that's what they do. But they also are very much developers in terms of having people on, on their staff who can advise and counsel concerning best decisions as to where to, not, not zoning, perhaps, but where do you move students from in terms of what students from Chrysler might need to go to this school, what students from Brentonford area might need to go to this school. Those types of folks, they have on, on staff also.
Do you see this being a problem if it's three, four years out, as far as the demographics changing, to where we would have to spend this money again?
I do not. The, the money that you are allocating tonight is not for those things. The money that you're allocating tonight is mostly for some architectural work, some geotechnical work, engineering work that has to be done to determine where that building needs to be set on this property, what type of footings and those type of things will have to be dealt with in terms of building, building. The, the work that they're going to do in helping us make those decisions concerning zoning and who's going to go where, those are, they will do that for free, basically, at this time. Those are some consulting things that they will not charge us for. They, they will make their money when we start building the building.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
So this is not a licensed architectural, Spencer, council?
Yes.
They're a construction contractor, is this?
They have contractor's license, yes.
Okay, they have contractors, but they're, but they're not.
Construction management probably would be closer to what they do as opposed to be, they're, they're not the contractors, they're not the general contractor, but they do construction management to ensure that you get what you are supposed to get, and it's done in the most economical way possible.
They work for us on many occasions, correct?
This, this would be their fifth project in Robertson County, yes.
Mr. Gray?
Mr. Whitlow, any estimate, long range estimate, what this school would cost?
I think the number that we've been using is $15 million. We, we believe it will be in that vicinity. Some of that may depend on final decision as to whether it should Some of that may depend on final decision as to whether it should be a middle school or an elementary school. But those are two, two things that have been discussed as possibilities with the board.
He might want to tell how many students you're anticipating.
We're, we're anticipating a building for, for a thousand students. Thousand students.
Other questions?
It concerns me just, just a little bit.
Commissioner Duggar.
That if we don't know if we're building it for an elementary or for a middle, but yet, we're going to get the concept out there. And I know, the date she threw out was what, fifteen or sixteen? Fifteen of the ladies?
I said fourteen would be great, fifteen is a must, we feel like.
But, I mean, I don't know that that's realistic in our county budget. And, and I'm with, with Mr. D'Orio there, and I don't want to see us do something that we're going to do over again.
What would be, be doing over again?
Well, I mean, I just know, we stood, they stood here with the, the library concept and drawings, oh, a year ago or so, and, and they said, but these were done so many years ago, and we don't even know how, if that would hold up today.
The concept ideas that they will bring to us, the board, will allow us to make those decisions necessary to make that final, is it going to be an elementary, is it going to be a middle school? We won't spend a lot of time nor money on, on doing drawings and preparations until such time as the board makes that decision. Once the board makes that decision, then they will design either an elementary or a middle school. That, that's really the only, it, it, that's, that's what you're deciding, what they're deciding, helping us decide, is will it be a K through five, or will it be a four through eight?
Mr. Brown?
All right, will they be able to bid on their own concepts?
No, they do not bid. This company does not bid.
It's a design bill.
It's a, it's a design bill, a construction management type situation, where they are fiduciaries for Robertson County School. They, they work for us. We pay them to ensure that the contractor does what the contractor is contracted to do.
Usually, just in my experience, the architects run jobs and do concepts, and then bid out to general contractors, so this is a little backwards from what I'm.
A little different than that, yes.
This is a little different than what I'm used to, so.
You're, you're talking about a hard bid situation, and that, that's the, probably the most common method, especially of government building, that, that we get into. But this is a situation of the developer or construction manager concept, that we, we started this about 2005. It was the first time that we ventured into it, and I have found it a very positive way to do it. Our building and grounds, individual, Mr. James Taylor likes the way we're doing it, and the board's been very appreciative, appreciative of the way that, that it's taken care of here. We feel like we're getting a good, good quality building for a good price.
Chair would make the observation that one of the attractive things about this option, and I think the reason the board went this route, is because you do get a guaranteed maximum price, and there's no cost overruns. So there's no comeback for a change order unless the school board asks for a change order.
They've given us back about 1.5, 1.7 million over the projects that we've done.
I'd also make the observation that we're at least two years away from breaking ground on this, but based on our bonded indebted in this situation. Commissioner Doris.
Where is this $20,000 coming from? Is it coming, or is it coming, are you taking it from us, or are you bringing it out of your budget?
I have requested permission to make that money available, so it would be coming out of the County General Fund budget.
Other questions?
Question.
Question has been called for. Seeing no objection to question being put, if you're in favor of this resolution, please vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being twelve votes in favor and eleven opposed and one absent, I declare that resolution as failed. Recognize Commissioner Garner for surety for bond for highway commission.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerks, fellow commissioners, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, bringing to your attention Resolution Number 091-712-073, Resolution approving surety for bond of elected highway commissioners.
Second? Second by Commissioner Bryant. Any discussion?
Question.
Question being called for. If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being twenty-three votes in favor and none opposed and one absent, I declare that resolution approved. Commissioner Garner.
Also bring to your attention Resolution Number 091-712-074. This is the Resolution approving surety for bond of appointed officials.
And is there a second? Second by Commissioner Doris. Any discussion? If you're in favor of this resolution, please vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being twenty-three votes in favor and none opposed and one absent, I declare that resolution approved. Commissioner Garner.
Bring to your attention Resolution Number 091-712-075. This is the Resolution approving surety for bond of assessor of property.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Adcock. Any discussion? If you're in favor, please vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm. There being twenty-three votes in favor and none opposed, I declare that resolution approved. Commissioner Garner.
Bring to your attention Resolution Number 091-712-076. This is Resolution approving surety for bond of director of schools.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bryant. Any discussion? If you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time.
I'm trying to vote for Mr. Haley, that's okay.
There being twenty-three votes in favor and none opposed and one absent, I declare that resolution approved. I recognize now Commissioner Kouts for declaring surplus property from the sheriff's office. Mr. Kouts.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, guest, fellow commissioners, I present to you Resolution Number 091-712-077. Second?
Second. Second by Commissioner Jackson.
This is a resolution to declare surplus property for the county. I think there's six cars that they're going to.
It's Ford Crown Victoria.
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. Mr. Eden, are you still voting? There being twenty-three votes in favor and one absent, I declare that resolution approved. I recognize now Commissioner Patsy Gregory on change in the rules of the commission. Just a couple of words to maybe hopefully clarify our procedure a little bit. Commissioner Gregory.
Couple of words can make a lot of difference. Mayor Bradley, Madam Clerk, fellow commissioners, and guests in the audience, this is Resolution Number 091-712-078. It is a resolution just, it's housekeeping, just to change the grammar in one of our rules.
Your motion is our second. Okay, any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Gregory.
The way our rules read right now, if you look at the top of the page, it says, when a vacancy occurs, each member of the commission shall be notified to said vacancy of the least seven days. And if you'll follow down, about three-quarters of the way down, we want it changed to where it says, when a vacancy occurs, each member of the commission shall be notified of said vacancy at least seven days. Purely a housekeeping item that we need to do.
Any discussion?
Please.
Question's been called for. If you're in favor of that resolution, please vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. Still voting, Commissioner Doris?
Aye.
There being twenty-three votes in favor and one absent, I declare that resolution approved. Any old business to come before this body? Seeing no old business, under new business, settlement agreement with the United States Department of Justice, and I'm going to recognize Commissioner Kouts from the Law Enforcement Committee to bring forth this resolution.
Fellow commissioners, I'd like to present to you Resolution Number 091-712-079.
Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner D'Orio. Mr. Kouts.
This is a resolution to approve a settlement agreement with the United States Department of Justice. Any, if there are any many questions, we probably need to get to Sheriff.
Well, let's make the county attorney a member of the body. Motion to make the county attorney a member of the body by Commissioner Brown, and second by Commissioner Baggett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So, Mr. Richard, if you'll come up, we'll give you an opportunity to expound on this particular resolution. It's Claude Richard, county attorney.
Chairman, members of the commission and guests, as some background, I guess in September, two years ago, we're right at a two-year mark. All of you might remember, we had some issues at the jail, Robertson County Detention Facility, the jail, was on the Nashville news networks about complaints about food for inmates. You might remember also, we went through an issue over in the federal courthouse, where inmates got together and decided that they weren't being served enough or the right kind of food. And we went through a hearing over there, and it was well-publicized. I'm sure there's nobody here in the room that, that missed that. The U.S. Justice Department in Washington, of course, took note of that, because that hearing was over in federal court in Nashville. The U.S. Attorney's Office was very supportive of Robertson County, and of course, we house many of their federal prisoners. And however, given all the publicity, the U.S. Justice Department did initiate this investigation. They came down later that fall, I guess of 2010, brought a team of experts from across the country on nutrition, on all sorts of, of inmate-type issues. Back and forth, met with Sheriff Holt and his staff that had been assembled. The end result of all of that was, some year and a half later, they determined that, in some part, due to changes that Sheriff Holt and his new staff had made, and they were extremely complimentary, I have to tell you, of the administration, being Sheriff Holt and, and his top people, a lot of those changes were made, and the end result was, they determined that both in food issues and dietary and nutrition, as well as, as healthcare, which were the two issues, food and healthcare, they determined that with the changes we had made, that we met the federal standards for how we handled inmates and treated them. However, a group from Washington is not going to spend eighteen months doing anything without finding something that needs to be changed. I think we could all take note that that's probably a fact. So it was determined that we were not providing the, enough care for inmates with mental health issues. So as a result of that determination, then probably the last six or eight months have been involved in negotiation, back and forth. This settlement agreement that's attached to your resolution is probably the eighth or ninth draft. There's been a lot of negotiation through myself and the sheriff's office. And again, the, I can tell you that the sheriff's office has already made probably ninety percent of the changes that this agreement talks about. We're to the point now that we made some suggestions in the last sixty days, and I think they're so pleased with what we've done, they used to, they would argue, and they just said, fine, we're ready to sign off. So we will be having somebody that we consult with. There's an item in the sheriff's budget for this coming year. Frankly, is somebody that has worked with the U.S. Justice Department in jails across the country. I can tell you, he gave a seminar in Nashville that Captain Crawford, who heads up the facility went to, Captain Crawford told him what was going on in Robertson County, and we have gone and hired him before the Justice Department could hire him. So he is going to be our consultant. They were obviously very agreed with that. I think we've got $15,000 in the budget. It'll be money exceptionally well-spent. So we're well on the road toward making all of these conditions and changes that the U.S. Justice Department has requested. But we're at the point now that this agreement needs to be signed off on, and it's in its final form that you have. I advise Mayor Bradley, of course, that we needed full commission approval. Assuming you approve this tonight, then I will send it on to Washington. It'll go through two or three levels, I'm told, there, and we'll get this thing implemented and try to put this in our rearview mirror as soon as we can.
Questions, Mr. Richard.
Question.
Seeing no objection to question being put, if you're in favor of this resolution, vote yes and confirm. If you're opposed, vote no and confirm at this time. There being twenty-three votes in favor, none opposed, one absent, I declare that resolution approved. Anything else under new business? Seeing none, Commissioner Gray, I think we're ready for the election of notaries.
Second option, so the notaries be elected as the seventh day of September?
There's a second. Second by Commissioner Ray. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion to adjourn is in order. By Commissioner Doris, second by Commissioner Bryant. All those in favor say aye. We stand adjourned.